Welcome to the April 4th, 2018 City Council Meeting. Let the record reflect that all council members are present. Please stand for the invocation and then the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, we acknowledge thee as Creator and Sustainer of all life. In our pursuit of the secular, help us not forsake the sacred. Blessed now, we pray, this meeting and its members to their continued service. Amen.
(Inaudible). 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 (Inaudible).
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Next, we have three special proclamations, the first of which is National Telecommunications Week, which will be Councilmember Matthews.
Yes, thank you. Good morning. This is a proclamation for the city of Pontegorroda. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of the information obtained from citizens who telephone the Pontegorroda Police Communications Center, and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas telecommunicators are the vital link for monitoring police officer and firefighter activities by radio, providing them information and ensuring their safety, and whereas they contribute substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and whereas telecommunicators exhibit compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job, and whereas in fiscal year 2017, Pontegorroda's telecommunicators answered 31,825 administrative phone calls and 7,288 911 emergency phone calls, contributing to a police officer average response time of 5 minutes and 45 seconds for all calls. Now therefore, the City Council of the city of Pontegorroda, Florida, does hereby proclaim the week of April 8 to 14, 2018, as National Telecommunications Week, and does hereby honor all of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. Passed and duly adopted in regular session this fourth day of April, 2018, City of Pontegorroda, Florida, Rachel Kiesling, Mayor. And accepting will be Audrey Dennis from our telecommunications center.
Good morning. Chief Pam Davis, for the record, Pontegorroda Police Department. I'd just like to say a couple words about the communications center for the Pontegorroda Police Department. Thank you, first of all, Mayor Kiesling and City Council members. The communications center for the Pontegorroda Police Department is a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week operation, and it's staffed by, on any given day, two telecommunicators. And they take 911 calls, they take administrative calls, and they dispatch for both police and fire for the city of Pontegorroda. So what you'll see is a call will come into the 911 center, and then, so one telecommunicator's taking the call, and the other one's dispatching it to a police officer in the field. But if somebody needs medical attention at that same call, they may also dispatch to a fire personnel. So it's a lot of multitasking and teamwork involved, and our telecommunicators are doing that on a daily basis, so they do a really great job. In addition, we are also the backup center to Charlotte County Sheriff's Office, so when they're experiencing an overload of calls, we then will pick up their 911 call, so we're doing that, too. We are also, there's a total of nine full-time dispatchers and one communications supervisor who oversees all of them, and she frequently fills in and sits at the console when they're not available. So she's, I'm gonna say, the hardest-working person at the police department, right, guys? So. Every entry-level dispatcher completes a minimum of 13 weeks of training when they come on. They are certified by the Department of Health, and they're also emergency medical dispatcher certified, and they're full-access Florida Crime Information Center operators. They, all dispatchers do a minimum of 20 hours every two years to maintain their certification. And so, as you heard, in fiscal year 2017, they handled 31,825 non-emergency administrative calls that came into the center. In addition, they handled 7,288 911 calls that came in. They processed or monitored 36,654 police calls for service. That's a lot of calls for service that these dispatchers were handling. They processed just about 4,000 fire events. So it's a lot of work in one year. Our telecommunicators have the most difficult job in the department and are a lifeline to our citizens, our officers, and our fire personnel. And I believe they're the unsung heroes of Pontegorroda, and I'm very proud of them. So thank you for recognizing them and for giving them the proclamation for National Telecommunications Week. We hope that you'll stop by next week because we're gonna continue to recognize them all week long, so thank you.
Next, we have Autism Awareness Month. Vice Mayor Wine will present.
Thank you, Rachel. It's my honor and pleasure. Whereas autism is a complex developmental disability resulting in significant impairment of an individual's ability to learn, develop healthy, interactive behaviors, and understand verbal, nonverbal, and reciprocal communication, and whereas autism is the fastest-growing developmental disability affecting an estimated 1.5 million individuals nationwide and 150,000 individuals in the state of Florida, and whereas autism can affect anyone regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, or socioeconomic background, and whereas although a cure has not been found, persons with autism can be helped to reach their greatest potential through accurate early diagnosis and with appropriate education and intervention, and whereas support groups such as Florida Affiliate of Autism Society have dedicated years of service in their ongoing efforts to advocate for the rights, humane treatment, and appropriate education of all persons with autism, and where autism is a complex disability that requires increased research for greater understanding and accurate diagnosis, and so that one day everyone will have access to appropriate treatments and services. Now therefore, the City Council of the city of Pontegorroda, Florida, does hereby proclaim April 2018 as Autism Awareness Month, to raise public awareness of autism and hope that it will lead to a better understanding of the disorder and increased knowledge of the programs which have developed to support individuals with autism and their families. Passed and duly adopted in regular session this fourth day of April, 2018, signed Rachel Kiesling, Mayor, and Karen Smith, the City Clerk, and Maureen Morris will be accepting.
Okay, good morning. Thank you very much for reading this. Yes, April is Autism Awareness Month, and April 2nd was World Autism Awareness Day, so many large buildings around the world, such as the Empire State Building, were lit up blue to remember and remind people about autism. My husband and I live in Pontegorroda. We have three sons. Our middle son has autism. Autism is a lifelong developmental disability, and we have many, many people in our community with it, children, young children, adults, and that's just, you know, a portion of how many have it in so many places. There is a lot to learn about autism. If you have concerns for a family member or you want to learn more about it, some resources I would like to recommend would be autism online. Autism Society of America has a good website. Autism Speaks also has a very detailed website. CARD, Center for Autism and Related Disabilities, which is connected to our state university system in Florida, has some very good resources also. Also, our own county 211 has autism listed and a contact that you can call locally if you want to talk to somebody. And there's a lot of information out there. If you know a family dealing with it, you know, be patient with them and understand it's, it's a lot they have to deal with, and, but the individuals can make progress, will make progress, but, you know, there's more time to teach and to go through a lot of skills building and things. Thank you so much for reading this. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And next, we have Parliamentary Law Month. Quite a tongue-twister, so I'll do my best. Proclamation, City of Pontegorroda, Florida. Whereas since April is the birth month of Thomas Jefferson, who wrote the first American manual of parliamentary practice in 1801, it is an appropriate time to honor him and celebrate the use of parliamentary procedure. And whereas it is also fitting to honor Henry Martin Robert, author of Pocket Manual of Rules of Order for Deliberative Assemblies, also known as Robert's Rules of Order. And whereas Robert's Rules of Order, newly revised, is the most widely recognized and used parliamentary authority in public and private organizations, and where it is timely to reflect upon the importance of parliamentary procedure in providing for civil discourse, protecting individual rights, ensuring fairness, and in maintaining order. And whereas the National Association of Parliamentarians is a professional society dedicated to educating leaders throughout the world in effective meeting management through the use of parliamentary procedure, and their vision is to provide parliamentary leadership to the world. And whereas the National Association of Parliamentarians has by adoption of a standing rule designated the month of April as Parliamentary Law Month. Now therefore, the City Council of the city of Pontegorroda, Florida, does hereby proclaim the month of April, 2018, as Parliamentary Law Month. Passed and duly adopted in regular session this fourth day of April, 2018, Rachel Kiesling, Mayor, and today we have Joyce Gleason.
Yes, ma'am.
Who will accept and say a few words. You want to come get the proclamation first, and then you can say a few words?
Thank you.
You're welcome. (Laughter).
I am Joyce Gleason, Vice President of the Charlotte County Parliamentarians Unit of Florida of National Association of Parliamentarians. And our primary mission is education. I can look around the room and see members and students from our classes. We are a service organization to the community. Our job is to instruct people so that they understand that rights of members are protected in meetings. This is based on the writings of General Henry M. Robert, and as you said, it's the 11th edition of Robert's Rules of Order, newly revised, that is being used today. And we thank you for this recognition.
Thank you. And next, we have a 15-year Service Award. Howard.
So before our IT manager, Brad Schutte, gives a little more background on Alicia's technology expertise, we have a 15-year Service Award for Alicia Oates. Now, there are two things you need to know about Alicia other than her computer stuff. She's also the city's official photographer. Whenever they would need pictures on any events, she's there. And she's also an avid volunteer and photographer for Team Pontegorroda, which some of you may not know. So she is multitasked, so 15 years. Alicia, come on up.
How many jobs has she had in the city? How many different jobs?
Wait, you're gonna take a selfie? Yeah. (Laughter).
Right, a selfie, that's good.
Mikail's our city's unofficial photographer, but Alicia's busy with other things. I was trying to figure out what to say this morning. My name's Brad Schutte. I'm the IT manager for the city, and Alicia is definitely a valued member of our staff. As I said, I was trying to figure out what to say this morning, but knew that I wouldn't be able to take up the amount of time it would take. Alicia is a passionate worker. She puts everything into everything that she does. When I first came aboard, she was a great source of knowledge to me about how the city works, because she's worked in various areas of the city and has just knowledge of how things function and how things work that is invaluable to IT in making everything go as smoothly as it does. She was just recently promoted into our business system analyst position that was vacated, so she's been moving up through the ranks of IT that matches the exuberance that she brings to her work. I'm hoping that she'll be around for another 15 years or more as part of IT, because she serves our customers well, and everybody loves her.
Want to make a speech, Alicia?
No, thank you.
(Laughter). I wondered how many positions you have had over the 15 years.
Including, let's see, one, two, three, four, this would be my fifth.
Fifth, okay. All right, good.
There you go.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have introduction of border committee member nominees. If your name is in the running for a border committee and you would like to introduce yourself, please take this podium over here, state your name, and you have a couple of minutes to tell us about yourself. Anybody? Border Committee Member Nominee?
Over here. Okay, I like this.
Okay, seeing none, we will recess the City Council and shortly reconvene as the Community Redevelopment Agency.
Again. I'm so proud of you.
(Inaudible).
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're the trendsetter.
They really did get you.
Good.
Well, thank you.
Oh.
The Hawaiian shirt is coming.
(Laughter).
There you go.
Okay, we will call the CRA meeting to order. Let the record reflect that all CRA members are present. First, we have citizens' comments on the CRA agenda items, which would be the CRA status report for April 2018, the approval of the minutes of March 7, 2018, and the Herald Court Center signage. If you would like to speak on any one of those three items, now would be the time. Take this podium to my right, state your name. You have three minutes. Would anybody like to speak on any of those three items? Okay, seeing none, we will move into the project status report for April 2018.
Howard Cunix, CRA Director. Monthly report for the Marina, pretty consistent as previous months. The contractor is working to finish up the repairs to the docks from Hurricane Irma, so once they're done, they can be rented out as well. But the Marina's financial position is very, very healthy. And the pump-out vessel activity, a little less than the previous month. Lot more miles traveled, but less gallons pumped than a year ago. The parking, the bid solicitation is being drafted by procurement, and that should be sent out very shortly. Once that's out on the street, the bids come back, we approve the bid, we'll start the work, and that is, we have a tight timeframe, because that needs to be done before the next event season. That better not be behind schedule.
So what is the timetable? Because, you know, we've been talking about this for a long time, so I would have expected us to probably have put it, already put it out to bid, so that we're ready to go once we really declare season over.
Well, season isn't over.
I know that, but I mean, it's...
No, we're okay.
Okay.
We're fine. We're, I'm just saying, we just, we can't find something underneath there. This is not a complex project. We're okay. There's still going to be events going on, but not like the event season. We're still okay, assuming we get good bids. And Herald Court Center, we did get response from the Dream Salon. Their contractor is finishing up a job, getting ready to come back, and they are fully intended to do their work in May. We're not ready to give them the boot, because we have nobody else ready to move in, so we're still working with them. That's where we are. We hope the best. And that's also moving along. The pavers, did the pavers get here?
Not yet.
Not yet. We're waiting for the pavers to select the right paver. We can put the pavers in and the column fencing and sod, and that'll be ready to go.
So when does, when, I see you say fall planting season, but what, can we get a little bit more?
September.
September? Okay.
Well, we hope to be done well before September.
Right, because they'll start planting in...
They'll start planting in September.
That is when planting season starts, so.
And the engineer, Wyler Engineering's working on the plans for Phase 2, and we'll be able to bring you some options still on board for May, first or second meeting in May, we don't know yet. And the playground, the grading is done, so now sod will be in Monday, hopefully. Monday?
It's in.
Oh, it's in?
Yeah.
Oh, they're ahead of schedule.
That's good.
Now they have to water.
All right. We're getting a lot of complaints. It's not open yet. Water roll.
We actually have something that was ahead of what we said it was going to be. Okay, so they're moving along. I know we missed the season, but we'll get it open in May. And the restrooms, actually, the playground restroom bid is out on the street. It will be back May, I think May 2nd is when it's, the bids are supposed to be back, somewhere around that timeframe, so. And we're still waiting to get a contract together to, for the restrooms by the pavilions, but the LOMAR doesn't become effective until the end of June anyways, assuming nobody has any adverse comments on it. And the library should start Monday, the construction. And the CRA annual report, which we are required to do every year, along with our CAFR, is available on the city's website to take a look at that, just a recap of the annual activities in the CRA. That's all I got.
Howard, refresh my memory way back. There was discussion with Marina Park to cut through the parking lot. Have we talked about that discussion with them at all, since we're moving ahead with this other project and the other side of the parking?
They were supposed to do it, and they didn't pursue it.
So could we possibly find out from whoever's gonna do, or can we somehow package it into what we're doing over there and try to get them to help us out with what they've committed to?
Well, I'd rather not hold up the bid, but...
But if we already have somebody working in there, now would be the time. Be much easier than a standalone project. Just saying, could maybe you and I meet with them and find out if they're interested?
Well, we can ask them once again, are they planning to do it or not? If they say no, I'd rather not hold up this bid.
Okay.
To redesign, to get...
Well, if they say no, then we'll, then we know they're not gonna do it, so it's been a long time.
Yeah, it has.
Lynn?
Howard, I've been asked now by a number of people, are we going to do any kind of a groundbreaking ceremony for the new library with this county and the city cooperatively? The Friends of the Library want to know, because they're looking forward to having some kind of a formal event that can be a photo op.
I can certainly put a request, email to Ray Sandrock, and see if the commissioners are planning to do it.
I think it would be really nice if we did that as a cooperative effort.
Yes.
We can ask them. I know they're starting construction Monday.
Yeah, I know, and I know it's short notice, but I know that the Friends of the Library really are very seriously interested in trying to have some kind of a formal event. I mean, they got a notification that they have to appear before the Board of Commissioners to present their $50,000 check on Tuesday's meeting, and...
They could ask at that time to have a...
Well, it's after the fact. It's the day after the groundbreaking. That's why I'm asking the question.
I'll put a request in. I just wish more people would just go in front of the county and request these things, as opposed to us all the time.
Well, they wanted them to just deliver the check, and Katie from the library, Friends of the Library, said we're not gonna do that unless we have an opportunity to do a formal presentation of the check, at least at a commissioner meeting, so they're doing that on Tuesday.
Okay, I'll get it out.
Anything else for Howard?
Uh-uh.
Thank you.
Move approval of meetings of the regular meeting, minutes of the regular meeting, March 7?
Second. We have a motion, a second, to approve the minutes of the March 7 meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. And next, we have the Herald Court Center signage.
Good morning, for the record, Mitchell Austin, Urban Design. So this is a brief presentation. City Council, of course, has seen, had a discussion. We made, staff made presentation about signage for the Herald Court parking garage. Existing, there is wayfinding signage. We do have a downtown parking guide, which we revamped according to the city's branding. Maybe marketing of that would be appropriate to local businesses, so that their customers know where parking is available, public parking is available in the downtown. The existing building signage, which we discussed previously, is fairly anemic. The only indication that the structure is a parking garage is located on Herald Court, where it does say on the face of the building that it is public parking. We looked at examples around the area. We looked at these blade signs that were in Fort Myers as a good recent example of more effective signage for parking garages. Of course, City Council said, this is not Pontegorroda. This is maybe fine for Fort Myers, but not our style. So staff went back to the drawing board and looked at precedents, including our branding, projecting, and blade-style signs typically seen on historic theaters, and developed the following proposal. These are just conceptual designs. The color is actually from our logo. It's one of the three different blue colors that are on our logo. And applied to the building, conceptually, you would have something visible from Olympia Avenue and Tamiami Trail, and then again, something visual near the actual entrance of the garage on Herald Court.
Thank you.
Yes.
Questions, comments?
Two points.
Yes.
Recognizing that identifying better parking facilities apply more to the non-full-time folks that are traveling. I have to assume that most of our regulars have a good idea where the parking is, so we have to be cognizant of something that does jump out to the strangers or the newcomers to the community. I think what we have now with repetitive, small wayfinding types of emblems are good, but I think we do need something distinctive, as we see here, not necessarily that size and that, but we do need something that does stand out, easily recognizable to get to our major parking facility center setting. So I think we need to proceed to some sort of resolution, hopefully, today.
I personally, I'm okay. I was just in Fort Collins, and they've recently built, I mean, that place is booming, but they've built several new parking garages, and really, they just use that round P. That's really what they use, and I think that's sufficient. Honestly, I mean, I don't know that we need the huge parking sign, and the one thing that, go back to the photos that you had on the corner of, I, no, but, yeah, no, the go back to the other one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I would just be worried if somebody coming down 41 would see that and try to take a left there. That would be my reservation with that placement. The one on the Herald Court side, I think, is good. They are a bit large, but I'm okay with just the round P projecting like what you had with the decorative. I think that looks fine.
Rachel, I agree with you. I think the round P is universal. Everybody knows where, whatever country they're, they use that, and it is in good taste, and I think that would fit here fine.
Lynn?
I agree, and the only thing I would add is that I'm not in love with the color at all. I think it doesn't go... I think it doesn't go with the building at all, it makes it look standout ugly. Personally, I would like to see it be a color that more universally blends with the colors of the building somehow.
The problem with that, though, with the universal P is blue.
That's fine, but if we're gonna put these signs up, they, I don't like.
The parking?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or the big marquee.
Yeah, yeah.
They're horribly big, and they're, and I just don't like the color to go with the building. We made a concerted effort to make those building colors beautiful.
I, I think that the P is sufficient, I don't think we need this other, but I would say that 17 going east is probably one of the more important places for placement. Because at least from talking to business owners along Olympia, that there, the people who go to those restaurants don't know. So I would say even more important than the 41 placement, so maybe that would be less confusion as well.
Nancy?
I agree, the input I've received from residents, they thought that the parking garage is being used, but I understand Charlie's point of, for visitors, but the P, the circle, is sufficient. Our residents felt like we're spending a lot of money on something that we may not need, and that the P is a lot less expensive and can help us achieve what we need, more financially prudent, so.
I agree.
Gary?
And I agree with the consensus, I think that the, the small P is sufficient right now, we can always revisit this at a later date, if we find it's necessary, but the small P is an international symbol, so that foreign visitors are gonna understand that and so forth, so I think we're all fine and dandy with that.
So where and how many do we put up?
So we need to?
Well, in terms of the, the, the circle P emblems, if you had one on the Herald Court, as seen in this proposal, another one on US 17, Olympia Avenue would be appropriate. So that would be two. In addition, staff would recommend that we change the facade signage that's over the parking garage entrance, it currently says "public parking", to add the word "free" to that, so free public parking, and then remove the existing blue P that's applied to the wall.
That would be fine, and before, I asked about a larger street sign that says Herald Court, did we look at that?
We did not look at that, certainly that could be addressed on possibly the, the tower location there, as far as the facade signage.
I was thinking on Taylor Road as well, too, on both ends, because some people don't know that that's the Herald Court.
That's what it is.
Well, that was one of the things I brought up at our last meeting, our December meeting, was you could add on the top of that tower, a free public parking, or something in the tasteful letters that you have, where on the other side you have the City of Punta Gorda or whatever, you could add something up there. Now, it might not be as visible, but you could add something up there that would identify it tastefully.
Certainly, certainly we can, staff can explore that.
We can take the P that we're taking off the front and put it up there.
Oh, you wanna put the P up on the top? Oh.
Might not be big enough, though.
I was just looking at name, I know we have the City of Punta Gorda on the building someplace, and we.
Yeah, the city seal was on the, the north tower.
Yeah.
Northeastern Tower.
Okay, so is everybody okay with three projecting Ps? Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much.
In the style that he's just recommended, the new style?
Yes. So Karen, do we need a motion? Let's just do it, just to be, because since it's parliamentary law, I'm like.
I'll move.
Okay. Nancy's made a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve, all in favor? Aye, opposed, carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Citizens' comments on CRA, anybody like to speak on the Community Redevelopment Agency, now would be the time? Please take this podium over here, you have three minutes. Anybody to speak on CRA items? Okay, seeing none, we'll go Commissioner's comments, Gary.
Uh, no, no more at this time?
No more, no?
Yeah, I, I do, I was over a week and a half ago to a meeting of the Port Charlotte Harbor CRA, and had a couple of items on that agenda pertaining to Sunseeker, had a, some amount of public input on various real or perceived impacts of that. Get me thinking, I've had conversation with a few of our citizens here in, in the city. It seems to me that we may wanna consider initially putting together some sort of a, an ad hoc group to start looking at the impact of Sunseeker as it's perceived with any number of our stakeholders, and when I say the impact, that doesn't necessarily mean something negative, but just to look at, at what we can expect, what we can identify, what we can comment on in a more formal manner, so. I like to see that as something to be considered, I think it can have a benefit. I don't like talking about additional ad hoc committees, but I'm not sure how, we, we haven't heard some of our elements weigh in, for example, our chamber, I don't think has weighed in on anything specific to it. Team Punta Gorda, I'm not sure, but the suggestion is to consider something of that nature, thank you.
So do you wanna put that on the next month's agenda?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
Yes, I want to wish our police chief a safe landing on April 14th. She and Sheriff Pramell are going to be going over the edge of the SunTrust Bank at 9:30 in the morning, for a very good cause, that's the Drug-Free Charlotte. And I thought maybe they were over the edge when they decided to do this, but anyway, I do wish them a safe landing.
Thank you.
I will add to that, that I'd like to set up a cheering squad for Pam, because Bill Pramell is very, very competitive, and so is Pam. And I think it would be really awesome if we had a whole mess of people out there to help and support her.
And I think, I think it starts at nine, but I think she said last time she may be closer to noon, like the finale.
No, they, I had her check the other day with, with the sheriff's office, and she's, you're going at 9:30?
Yeah, what time?
Changed it to 9:30.
Okay, 9:30.
9:30, 9:30 and 9:45 respectively.
I think that's a grand idea, to have a, a big cheering section.
I think we should have a cheering squad. Maybe we all wear blue shirts or something, I don't know, just something, but I put it in my newsletter last week, so I hope, I hope everybody else does the same.
Good point.
No comment.
With that, we are adjourned.
I think it'd be fun to have a lot of people out there cheering.
Rachel, how do you wanna do that, you want me to do that whole section?
No, after the public hearing, then, when we announce it, I'll say my thing, and then I'll just step out and you can come down here. 9:30, I gotta put that in my. Okay. We are back in session as the City Council, and we do have one public hearing, GA 03-18.
Yes, this is a continued first reading of a ordinance, which I'll read by title only. In accordance with the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending Chapter 6, Boats, Docks and Waterways, Article 1 in general, Section 6-24, Use of Boat Ramps, Punta Gorda Code, to amend regulations relating to the use of public boat ramps, and to establish regulations for the use of public day docks within the City of Punta Gorda, providing for conflict and severability and providing an effective date.
Thank you.
Good morning, for the record, Mikhail Finkel. As the city attorney said, this public hearing was continued from March 21st. City Council wished to further address the proposal to prohibit overnight docking. Since that time, staff has had an opportunity to meet, including with Marine Officer Kennedy and Police Chief Pam Davis. One additional option that we are putting forth is to treat Lashley Park Marina day docks and Gilchrist Landing day docks separately. So for Lashley, the Lashley Park location, as the city attorney said, we don't, we can't limit boat size, so that would still be first come, first served, and council could wish to put either some sort of hourly time limit, three, four hours, whatever deemed appropriate, or use the overnight language, certain times such as 1 to 5, and that would address the issue of the boat that is docking there overnight. When we go to Gilchrist Landing, one of the suggestions was, is to reserve a portion of the dock for temporary loading and unloading always, that way there would always be some space available for either boaters coming in, or for persons using the park or the neighborhood to launch their small crafts. And then another, the other designated, the rest of it could be for those dinghies coming in for the liveabords. If council, I think it would be prudent to put some time limit on it, just so they're not there for, you know, storing them there for seven days, so if, you know, anywhere from 24, 36, 40, head hours, what, some, some limit that you see appropriate. For discussion.
Bless you.
God bless you.
So basically, this ordinance, as it's written, does not delineate the two?
No, we, because that is how it was presented, we left it as that, if council can give us direction to amend it to something, you could deny the ordinance completely and ask us to come back with a re-advertised ordinance, or?
Can we separate the two within this ordinance and without going back? And re-advertising?
The title is genere, I believe it's generic enough, because it talks about regulations for the use of public day docks. It doesn't specifically, the, the title itself doesn't.
So we could split it out within the.
I'll let Dave, the city attorney.
Again, we're asking for your direction, and I think that the ordinance title is broad enough that we can add to it, pursuant to your direction. We didn't have to, once again, continue the public hearing, so that the public will be able to see and comment on the revisions, but that's why we're here, to figure out what it is that the City Council desires.
And I had a question on why it needed to be separated out, because, because the, to be honest, the impact is probably more on the Gilchrist side, I didn't know why it needed to be, why it just couldn't be one rule for both.
Well, it all depends on what you wish to do. If you do not wish to have separate regulations that would be applicable just to the Lashley Park Marina day docks, then it could all, one, one size fits all, but I think the recommendation was that they both, the two different, the two docks were designed for different purposes, and maybe that's why they need to be treated separately.
I would.
Lynn?
I, I agree with what David just said, I've spent, over the past two weeks since the last council meeting, I've spent a lot of time in meetings about this. I met first with the Boaters Alliance and a couple of the liveabord people, and we had a long conversation about what their needs are out there. And in an effort to fold this into the future waterfront master plan that we're working on with the Boaters Alliance, it was suggested that we consider, first of all, we do need to keep them separated, because they are two totally distinctively different locations and wants and needs. And the people that are liveabords, in most cases, are sailboats that can't get under the bridge, so they have not, they don't have the choice of going to the mooring field, or they would. The, the location that they're in right now is directly off of the Gilchrist Park area where the, the two buildings are located down at the very end. And most of them are all kinda congregated in that general area. But there are several folks that are liveabords that are here for an indefinite period of time, and it was, it was asked if we would consider doing a permit-type program for just those people that want to register with the city and have a finite deadline date, just like we do for car stickers or boat stickers. You would get a registration sticker with the city that would allow you to use the day docks for whenever you need to use the day docks. And in the case of, as an example, we have an Allegiant Pilot, we have a nurse, we have a gentleman that works with the Learn to Sail program among those boats. There's only four or five of them out there that are here for an indefinite period of time. The Allegiant Pilot has a very wildly erratic schedule, as does the RN. The Allegiant Pilot may get stuck someplace because of weather or a mechanical breakdown on the plane. The, the RN may be stuck for more than one shift at a time, so it was suggested that we consider putting a permit program in place just for those folks, and they would have to register with the city.
So what, yeah, what other program do we have for boats and cars with stickers?
Well, you, you register your car every year, you register your boat every year with the state, but we could do something on a city level, where this.
Okay, 'cause we don't have anything that I know of.
No, 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 I'm not suggesting that we do.
Okay.
I'm suggesting that we implement a program with permits, that they can put on the, on the hull of their dinghy that would register them with the city, so that they wouldn't get a citation, in other words, if they're there for more than three or four hours.
So this is for their dinghy?
Yes. It wouldn't be for their boat, their boat's gonna stay out in the harbor. And Officer Kennedy has made sure that he's checked in with every one of those folks several times, he's in constant communication with them. He has made sure that all the boats are currently registered, that are out there anchored, he's making sure that they get pumped out on a regular basis. We had a long conversation the other day, I met with, with the chief and with John Kennedy and with the Boaters Alliance president, and we talked extensively about this. But it would be another way that we can fold it into the waterfront master plan, number one, and make us boater-friendly, but also be able to accommodate those folks that need to be on shore for indefinite periods of time, and I'm not talking weeks at a time, I'm talking maybe a day or two at a time, if they have to be away for an overnight.
Gary?
I think Lynn's spot on. There's precedents in other communities where they have particular neighborhoods where parking issues are, and they have special permits that allow those neighborhood, the neigh, the people that live in that neighborhood, to have assurance that they're gonna have an appropriate parking spot overnight. This could be Wrigleyville in Chicago, it could be Boulder, Colorado, there's a couple neighborhoods like that, etc.
Every college town has.
Every college town, exactly. And I think that basically we're talking that type of, of accommodation to the folks. The reality is, in my mind, I suspect that any problem we can have are, is not gonna be, as far as maintaining their boats properly and using pumpouts and everything, is not gonna be with the, the person that's staying out there, it's gonna be the, the, an occasional inconsiderate transient individual. And I think that Lynn's, Lynn's spot on, that we should try to accommodate individuals that are gonna be liveabords there that might want to leave a dinghy overnight because of transportation issues, it's just like parking a car.
Well, my concern is where is their car then, I mean, it just goes from one thing to the next, and that's where my concern is, why?
But people already use anchor out there, I know people, the Punta Gorda Sailing Club hosts events out there, and people who live in PGI and BSI go out in their boats and anchor out there, and they park their cars overnight, and there is designated areas where they can park their cars, so they already do that.
They're doing it.
So that, that happens now. So I, I think what Lynn is recommending, I've, I've talked with a number of people that would, totally, it's, it's, all the feedback I've received is, is exactly the same. We should restrict it and, and offer a, a decal. It was also recommended that we actually charge for the decal, that it's. Oh, yes. And it was, I, I had residents suggest perhaps $100 a year, $60 for six months, or $30 per quarter. And because it's something that people want, but it's gonna be, it's gonna be a limited basis, I mean, there're not really gonna be that many people that are gonna do this, but.
How can we limit it? If we make a program and we say, okay, we're gonna give dinghy decals, how can we say we only wanna give out so many?
I didn't hear that we were gonna do that.
I didn't, I didn't suggest that.
What I, the question I do have, though, is, so the sticker will exempt the dinghy owner from having to comply with whatever regulations would be applicable to non-sticker owners, so what are the regulations that we wanna establish for the non-sticker owners?
I mean, I thought what we had was pretty close, juhah?
I mean, if it's only four or five people, I don't see why they can't just make themselves known to the officer and, and, and this be reasonable accommodation. I only say this because if we build it, they will come, I, 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 we have places like Fishman's Village where people can, if they wish to stay a long time, can stay here, I don't, I just don't see people limiting themselves to coming here, if we just offer, especially, even, even a decal just means everyone has a decal, it'll be 100 people with decals, and so all of a sudden we'll have a crowded little mini-city, which I don't really think will benefit us on any level, it won't benefit the neighborhood, and it won't benefit the city, because they're not putting anything into the economy, I, I think anyone who's working here, it's like, there's the, the Allegiant Pilot, the nurses, they can easily introduce themselves, you know, to Officer Kennedy, and he will know what their situation is, and I think that could accommodate that, I don't see we need to, I think our ordinance is good as it is.
He's coming to the podium. He's coming to the podium.
Marine Officer John Kennedy for the city. I just wanted to answer that question directly. It's great. I am the primary marine officer. I do put out emails to our officers if I'm contacted. That's a great program. Where I initiated this, after getting several calls from the harbor master at Lashley and talking with some of the residents over there by Gilchrist Landing, is the fact that I need something that I can enforce. Everyone knows, we're not out to write a bunch of tickets, but I need something that I can relay to these people that, hey, if you're, if you do implement a permit, if that's it, keep in mind, you can keep roughly an 11-foot kayak or vessel, and up to counting the cleats, 20, inside the Gilchrist Landing. I would never suggest making that many permits or issuing that many permits if that's the route you go at any given time. But for an officer, which doesn't have to be me, it can be a road officer working at night, we need some type of clarification, a time limit, per se, for overnight. That way, it gives everyone an opportunity to use the facilities that the city provides, because we are a great city. We have, we are the only one in a tri-county area that offers free parking, and is very inviting for the community to bring their vessels here, and we'd like to keep it that way. But from a law enforcement standpoint, I need something that I can legally enforce. Thank you.
Then I would be okay with what we have. So Gary?
I just wanted to say, because we're, we're talking about Gilchrist here, I just want to make a comment about Lashley. Okay, as far as limiting the time, I would be for that. On several occasions, I've had my boat with guests, and we said, "Okay, we'll go to Lashley Crab House." We'd go there, and there wasn't a place for me to put the boat. Okay, that's, that's going to happen from time to time, but if somebody's staying there way long, that means that there, there, we need to have some kind of reasonable turnover on that day dock over there. I mean, because if I was going to go to Lashley Park, then I have to turn around and go to Fisherman's Village, and, you know, and make Patty happy, but-
She's probably full, too.
You know, the, the good news is, we have multiple destinations we can go, but you, you know, you're, it would be nice to have some reasonable turnover over at Lashley Park. So I don't want to just not get, lose focus on that particular issue. As far as Gilchrist goes, I still think that Lynn's spot on, that we should have some type, as, some way of acknowledging individuals that would have a need to stay overnight in a reasonable way, and have a reasonable accommodation for them, so that police officers can appropriately enforce said accommodation. I would also say that we should make sure that whatever, in our verbiage, I would suspect that there's at least three spots, since there's availability for 20, at least three spots that no one can ever park on overnight. Reason being is, God forbid, somebody should be out there in a boat and have an emergency, and they have to call an ambulance, that there's always going to be a, you know, a place for that. So I, I think that's just, that's just a little nuance there, but I don't see us getting 20 permits out there anytime soon, anyway. If we got to that point, we could readjust it. That might be the time to actually put another mooring field out for sailboats somewhere.
So if we don't have any rules, then, like, if we don't have anything of this structure, then what are we saying to the permit people? That's where I'm getting stuck. That you can have your dinghy there all the time, unlimited?
They can, they can come and go on and off the dock as they need to come to shore.
But what if, what if they just park it there?
Well, they're not going to do that. I mean, we've, we've had a long conversation with, with the people that are liveabords, and that, that is not, first of all, let me say that they have gotten themselves together as a group, and they have all agreed to cooperate with whatever the rules the city puts in place will be. They are more than happy to pay a fee for a dock permit type of a thing, where they can put the permit on their, their dinghy, that it will be good for a period of time. They've talked with all the folks that are here that are just seasonal anchoring people as well. And I think they pretty much all agree that they're willing to work with the city in whatever way the city deems necessary. But I think, and as far, and let me address the parking real quick. In one case, the, the one gentleman has a daughter that lives on Gilchrist at Reta, and he doesn't park a car at Gilchrist Park. We have the, the pilot and the nurse have grandfathered permission from Fisherman's to use their parking lot for when they come ashore, so they bring their dinghy to shore, and then they walk down to Fisherman's to get their car. The, the other people are parking out on the road at the angle-in parking on Reta. So there isn't a situation where we have a lot of people abusing the privilege of using parking that they shouldn't be using. There isn't a problem with whatever we decide in the terms of a permit, but I just think that this is something that would be very beneficial and boater-friendly for everybody that comes to our city that wants to boat in our city and use our facilities.
Patty, do you have a second to-